There it is, the pot. Ready? And I brought you a present there. Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, it's October 21st, 2020, and please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I don't know if you've turned in your ballot yet, but I believe yesterday we were at 12%. The ballot's being turned in, so we've had quite the traffic through our parking lot. It's fairly well outlined how to circle around the building and drop off your ballot, so please do that. And just-
They could still be mailed at this time also.
Yes, they can be mailed, but just be sure and follow the arrows so you get there. Commissioner Henderson has a debate today, so he will not be joining us. We do have a very slight consent agenda.
I've reviewed the minutes from October 7th and October 14th, so with that I'll move consent agenda.
And I will second it. Further discussion? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so consent has been approved. The first item on our agenda is the acceptance of the Prevent Diabetes Central Oregon Grant for the fiscal year 2020, and I do believe Jessica Jacks may be joining us at this time. Oh, Tom, are you going to do this?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm Tom Kuhn, Community Health Manager at Deschutes County Health Services, and I'm coming to you today with a really fantastic opportunity. Pacific Source has awarded our Central Oregon Diabetes Prevention Program $168,000 for fiscal year '22, which would be, of course, July 1st of 2021 through June 30th of 2022. I'm coming to you today to request acceptance of the award. We did not have to apply for it. We were able to give some presentations about the program, which were well received, and now they basically turned around and offered us to fund us for that year, which is just fantastic news for this program. I've been involved with this program since its inception in 2015, and we're really happy where this is going and helping persons that are at risk for diabetes to not develop it. So if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
So, Tom, what if you already have diabetes? Can this program help those people?
It is intended for persons without diabetes to prevent them from developing it, so it is focused on diabetes-specific. We do have our Living Well with Chronic Conditions program also, which has components in it for persons with managing diabetes, so that's where we would refer those people to.
Okay, and we have that program?
Yes, that is also in our prevention programs, along with diabetes prevention.
Okay, excellent. So that's, what percentage of our population has diabetes? I know it's huge. I believe that when, it's one of the risk factors for COVID, that if you have diabetes, you know, it puts you at a higher risk rate, so what is-
Yes.
-large central Oregon?
Yeah, I don't have that local stat in front of me right now, I'll follow up with that, but basically, persons with diabetes are estimated to be 2.3% higher than persons without diabetes and healthcare expenditures. And I did want to point out on your, the agenda request, it said additional $7,888 per year, per person savings. That actually was an old stat that we didn't catch before we submitted it. It's actually an additional $13,700 per person, per year, in savings, or in the higher cost for diabetes.
So when was the 7,800 number applicable then?
That was, that was the number that we were using in the past. That was the most recent data we had. This new number just came out within the last year, so we're using that, but we unfortunately did not catch that before we sent the agenda request. So the savings is much greater with the new calculation.
Great. Well, it's, it's really magnificent that we'll be able to put that in and actually prevent people. I mean, isn't that what healthcare is all about, is really preventing problems, such as we hope that everyone has gotten their flu shot. It takes a couple of weeks for your flu shot actually to work, so it's almost November 1st, and I do believe there are flu cases in our community, a few, are there not? At least I heard there was one. So time to get your flu shot, and remember, prevention. So this is, this is great. Commissioner Devon?
Quick question. So this is for next fiscal year, starting next July, so is this, this is an expansion of the existing program at the same level? Is that what the big picture is?
Yeah, it's basically continuation of the program in its current format. We have gone to Zoom classes now instead of in-person attendance, and you know, there was, when we first had the COVID situation, there was a little bit of a hesitancy to use Zoom, but we find that people are getting more used to that platform now, and we are getting good participation and beginning to launch some cohorts with Zoom. But yes, it's simply continuing the program, which we do have funding for through June 30th of 2020, but now it gives us an additional year to keep the program rolling.
So how many people do participate on an average in the Zoom classes?
Well, the goal is always to get about 15 people in the classes, which that's actually the max. We try to get close to that. I think usually if we get around 12 people signed up, that's considered a good amount. And then there's always some persons that don't complete the class. It is a year-long class with 30 sessions a year, and the first 16 sessions meet every week. So this is a program that's fairly time-intensive for the participants, and after the first 16 sessions, then they meet every other week, and then they hope to wrap up by the end of the year. We've so far, since the program started, have had 400 participants in it and 30 cohorts, and there was an average weight loss of 9.8 pounds for those participants, which weight loss is a great indicator with diabetes and a risk factor.
Just by losing 10 pounds? That can make that big of a difference?
It can, but also it's the lifestyle changes that go along with it. Those are the things, diet and exercise, those are all incorporated into the classes. They're pretty comprehensive in just teaching the participants everything they can do, basically, for, you know, pretty much the rest of their lives to keep themselves diabetes-free.
And what is the start date of those classes? If someone hears us today and goes, "Oh, gosh, I really should sign up for that," when do they have to sign up?
Unfortunately, I don't have the first starting date of our next classes. We advertise them, and that's our main way of getting that, but I will get that to you.
Okay, well, I just thought that sometimes people do watch our meetings, and so it's always nice when we can repeat the information and get it out there to the public, and I'm sure Whitney will be sending out some public service announcements about it, too.
Yes, for sure.
So just another concept here, so it's Pacific Source grant funds, and it's kind of authorized through the Central Oregon Health Council. Can you just help, help us understand that?
Yes, this fund, it's a little bit different than normally. We get our funding through the Regional Health Improvement Plan Work Groups, so this time it was a little different route we took. We did present to their Provider Engagement Panel on the program, and Pacific Source, and I don't know all the inner workings of where this funding comes from, but they did have some funds to put back into the community, and it was recommended to Pacific Source from that Provider Engagement Panel that this would be a good place to spend some of the funds that they have to get back out into the community. So this is not the same as the Central Oregon Health Council funding we usually get.
Yep, okay. Well, with that, I'll move acceptance of the Pacific Source Prevent Diabetes Central Oregon Grant Funds for fiscal year 2022.
And I'll second it. Any further discussion?
It's just good to be able to reduce one of those variables for the great work that the Health Department's doing, because I know during our budget time, it's always, you know, which, which staff is funded and what are the things moving around, so it's nice to have a runway for this program into next year even.
Okay. Commissioner Devon?
I'll vote yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you so much, Tom. I miss not getting to see you at like our Health Council workshops and things, so hopefully someday soon, right?
Legislative session is coming up, so you'll see me plenty then.
Oh, excellent. I know, I know. We've, that's true. We usually, yes, it's great, so we'll have to, yes, hope for the best. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. All right, so now we have our Spring River Rural Commercial Zone text amendments.
Okay, can you hear me?
There we go, yes.
Okay, there we go. I thought I was unmuted. Guess my eyeglasses need to be straightened. Good morning, Commissioner Cynthia Smith with the County Planning Division. My colleague and I, Matthew Martin, are here to discuss hearing schedules for some upcoming applicant-initiated amendments to the county code. In particular, mine is a text amendment to the Title 18 zoning ordinance, in particular the rural commercial zone, Spring River Rural Commercial Zone, and then two sections in the Site Plan Review Chapter and its associated Chapter 18116. Knowing that you have a pretty full schedule in the next several weeks, leading up to the end, leading up to the start of the year, we are here to just seek direction on how to proceed with our hearing schedule. We've been to the Planning Commission. In my case, the Planning Commission, we had no opposition, written or oral. They, pardon me, voted to approve the amendments as recommended by staff, and staff's recommendation was just slightly different than what the applicant had requested. And so that's what basically I'm here for, along with my colleague Matthew Martin, who will follow me in a minute, but looking at your direction for work session and public hearing schedule.
Okay, looking at my calendar, I'm thinking option two probably might be the best. It's November 23rd. We were discussing whether we were going to have a meeting on the 25th. As it stands now, we still have that, so I think the 23rd for the work session and then the public hearing on the 2nd of December. Hopefully, we won't have a blizzard that morning, and we'll be able to have our meeting. Yes, because that's, that's a 10:00 AM start, so that, that probably should work. I don't know. Commissioner?
Those both, yeah, so once we start making a commitment here, the other, other land use coming down the pike will start to fit in also, but yeah, that works fine for me.
So we can proceed with at least option two, and if things change as the land use files start adding to your schedule, this might, might change a little bit, but for now, we'll, we'll work on the option two, which is the work session on November 23rd, and the public hearing would be on December 2nd.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
That's all, yeah, thanks for working with us on this. I know you guys have a full schedule, and then we have, as you noted, elections coming up, so this will be an interesting fall.
Yes. Well, some days we have to get out of our room early, so to accommodate voting and all that, so it's, it's great. But nice to see you this morning.
Yes, thank you likewise.
Okay, so now it looks like we have Matthew Martin. Oh, gosh, and we are really running early.
Okay, more social, less business.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Matthew.
Yes, Matthew Martin, Deschutes County Planning Division, as introduced by Cynthia Smith. I'm here for a scheduling update or confirmation regarding a matter coming before you later this year. In particular, we have a proposed plan amendment and zone change project proposed by Anthony Acetti for his property near what's commonly referred to as Deschutes Junction. A plan of amendment is to redesignate the property from agricultural to rural industrial, and then a corresponding zone change from exclusive farm use to rural industrial. This matter, quasi-judicial matter, went before the hearings officer in October, and she, excuse me, in September, and then she later issued a recommendation of approval of the plan amendment zone change earlier this month. So I'm here before you to identify the preferred and confirm the schedule for a work session that would involve a debrief on the entirety of the project, as well as present the record that's before you, and then the subsequent public hearing to receive testimony. As noted in the memo provided to you, I've identified two dates for that preliminary work session as November 9th or November 30th, corresponding with both the board and staff's availability, and then I had targeted December 2nd also for the public hearing. I just noting that, given that you just confirmed with Cynthia her public hearing on that same day.
It is a 10:00 AM start date to December 2nd, so we should be fine on that, I would think.
And I'll add that participation was limited at the hearings officer stage with only the applicant and one other party participating, so I would see that to, to be similar, meaning that the number of participants and, and volume of testimony would be relatively limited.
So in the big picture for land use, this is a required hearing in front of the Board of Commissioners with an approval. So there's no, this isn't an appeal, like, you know, just to kind of get the brain space around what we're doing here, this is not an appeal, it's a public hearing, public meeting about this approval.
Correct, yeah, and sorry to interrupt, but because the property involves redesignation of agricultural lands, a procedures ordinance requires the board hear the matter de novo and not necessitate an appeal, so project does not involve an appeal, and it's required by county code to come before you.
Yep.
All right.
Very good, yeah. So still looking for guidance on the work session date then?
So is, do you think, is November 30th giving us enough time actually, or would it be preferable to go with the November 9th date? I mean-
Ultimately, yeah, that's up to you, noting that December, or excuse me, November 30th would be just the Monday prior to the public hearing.
Right.
If you believe that's adequate time, we certainly can work with that, but if you'd like more time to, you know, review the materials in advance of the, the public hearing, then certainly the November 9th would be, would be more appropriate.
Okay, all right, and the 23rd of November isn't available?
Unfortunately, I am not available.
Okay, all right. I'm glad somebody is leaving town.
It's giving about, it's around Turkey Day.
Yes, it is around Turkey Day, and I just did hear the bird report-
Yeah.
-that there are lots of turkeys out there, and there are doves and quail and all that, this whole bird report, and I'm thinking like, no wonder the doves are all flying over my house now, because they know nobody's going to shoot them from my house. My cats will get them, that's all, just the cat problem.
So November 30th would be fine for me in preparation, you know, two days before, there's, this is a long history from my point of view, being in office, so I had the general scope of it to start with, and then getting down to the nuts and bolts of this would be fine on November 30th.
Yeah, and certainly the, the record will be presented to you in advance of the November 30th, so that you can review the materials prior to discussing that work session.
Tom had something.
I would just note that there are two other potential to be sizable items on November 9th already scheduled, so that would make that likely a lengthy meeting if you were to select that date.
Well, that's why we're here. It's our responsibility. I feel kind of, what is the word, guilty, looking at today's schedule. I know there's a lot of other things going on, so that's, November 9th, you're saying November 9th is too full, and Tony, you're saying that November 30th is fine for you. And I would comment that I did briefly meet Mr. Acetti in May of 2018, and I'm thinking like, gosh, it's, it's been quite a while since then, and now it's actually coming before us, so that's, that's good. Sometimes things take a lot longer than you expect. That's two years plus.
So this, this, there's a lot of history here, but when that bridge went in was way before my time, too, that's when this started to percolate, so I mean, there's a long history to this.
Okay, so November 30th, and if you can just get us the information prior to leaving for Thanksgiving, that would be so appreciated, and then when I'm not cooking, I can be reading it, correct?
There you go.
So, okay.
Certainly will, and as Commissioner Devon noted, there is some extensive history related to this particular plan amendment zone change process dating back to not only the install of the, the overpass for Tumalo Road, but also a previous plan amendment zone change request that was reviewed in 2014. That involved several steps and appeals in, in process. That brings us back to the current proposal that's before you today or now, and we will certainly cover that, that history during a work session and, and the public hearing.
Okay, all right, great, so we're good to go then with the 30th of November, and then put it on for December 2nd?
Great, will do.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Matthew. Have a lovely day.
You, too. Thanks.
Okay, so we are now at item six, which is a consideration of appeal of a hearing officer decision on a proposal, and because Commissioner Henderson is not joined with us today, and I actually have to recuse myself for this, because it is property right next door to my residence, so Commissioner Devon, do you want to-
I don't know that we're going to be able to proceed if there's-
Yes, there's a, there's a slight problem here. I see Tarek is on.
So yeah, I noticed your name's in there as the first few paragraphs, you know, the neighbors are, and-
Yes, that's me.
Yep.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Tarek Rawlings, Associate Planner with Community Development Department, and yeah, I just got an update that, yeah, Commissioner Henderson is not, not present now, and so we'd likely have to defer this consideration meeting to a later date, so if you have any tentative dates in mind, or you need this time to, to think through any dates that you might want to reschedule this to, I could-
Could we do it to next Monday? That'd be possible? Is it next Monday? What is the date? Is that a possibility?
Certainly, yeah, I could look into that, just on, I'm looking at just the counter schedule now for the planners, and yep, next Monday, the 26th, would, would work fine for me.
Okay, so we'll defer then to October 26th. Sorry about that.
Not at all.
No, it's very interesting. I was, the neighbors had met regarding this initially, and I were not, was not part of that, those meetings, and then when this came up, I was told that because I am the adjacent neighbor, that I would be recusing myself, so it's, it's, it's good. Anyway, keeping the public protected. So thank you, Tarek. We'll see you then on Monday, and hopefully Commissioner Henderson will be here, and Commissioner Devon and Commissioner Henderson can make that decision, because there does seem to be a determination that our board has to do. So you'll have to be on the same side.
Yep.
All right, great. All right, we are a bit early.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that Dr. Young is not available until 11:00. I heard from her, and she is giving us a report today. She is a physician that we have hired to do testing for county people that don't have their funds, and what did I say? I think my COVID test bill was $321 or something, so definitely, I know there's people out there, if they don't have insurance, that it can be quite expensive. I'm wondering, is Greg available? Could we do the CARES Act first, and then we might have to take a bit of a break, waiting for Dr. Young, because I checked with her, and she said she was totally booked until 11:00.
Well, I'd support that, you know, let's, let's set that to 11 o'clock. That'll be our COVID update that was scheduled for 11:30, but we'll start that at 11:00, and then, yeah, if Greg's available for a CARES Act funding, yeah.
We're also going to take a look at the state of the county presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Because that deferred from Monday and-
Oh, good. Well, we can definitely do that, that's just, it's not on my, is that an other item? We can move up?
I was under other items.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, well, we need Whitney then for that.
Would you, I can text either one. Which one would you prefer to do?
Well, I'd like Greg, if he could possibly come on, because I'm reading his report. It's got some red lines on it.
I just texted him, so he should be able to join us.
Look at the deer jumping.
The deer jumping?
Yeah, just-
Oh, there they are. One morning, I had two deer run almost in front of me on the way to work. Oh, Greg is coming now for Sharon. So that's good. I know, they always know in Sisters when it's hunting season, they all come to town. It's just, it's so unbelievable how really smart animals are.
Yeah, they move around quite a bit, yeah, the people are out there flushing them out.
I just saw a giant buck one day, the middle of the day in Sisters, and it was incredible. Yes, Greg, sorry, our schedule has been very flexible this morning. Thank you for being part of that flexibility.
It's an honor.
There you go.
And a privilege, yes.
Uh, yeah, I got my tap shoes on. I'll do the best I can here.
Oh, you tap pants.
Okay, so, yeah, it's not pretty, but I can get the job done most of the time. Okay, so just a real quick update on the status of our CARES Act coronavirus relief funding, and I left a copy of the revised, or the update in your box last night, so I think you probably should have that.
We do.
So just a couple of things. There were some questions last week that I wanted to go over real quick. One of the questions that came up at last week's meeting was, what was the status of the Spanish navigator position?
Yes.
And if you look on the notes on page, or it's, I'm sorry, it's on-
It's on the third, fourth page or something?
A2 Health and Social Service Navigator. So last week, we, or before last week, we had, health services thought that they would only spend $30,000 of the original $120,000 allocation, and so the $90,000 was returned to be re-appropriated, which you did, and then the update and the answer to the question from last week is noted there in, in red on 10/20. So due to the short duration of the funded position and the need to initiate services quickly, health services deployed a current employee as of October 19th to serve as a navigator, so they are underway as of two days ago. So the department anticipates using $25,000 of the revised $30,000 estimate, and so you can see there that we've reduced the need to $25,000, which if you follow that all the way to the bottom line, you'll see that there is a $5,000 uncommitted balance at this point as a result of that. That was one follow-up item from last week. The other was Commissioner Devon, there was a question that came from the AOC on how much more funding might we need in public health, and I responded to that in an email to you, which is also in the hard copy of the document I gave you last night, and essentially they were asking about our needs for additional CARES Act funds, and there was some question about whether they were talking about the funding that flows through the OHA, or the funding that comes directly from the state, from DAS to the county- from DAS to the county as a reimbursement, the funds of the 6.4 million that we're talking about now. So the response below is I had a conversation with AOC, and they basically said that they're anticipating a redistribution of CARES funds across both of those funding streams, and wanted to make sure, they wanted to know if counties were in need and could spend those funds for the remainder of the year. So I clarified with her and said, yes, we, we would need those. And I resent the AOC survey where they were asking the same information. I resent that to her, and that survey was from the end of August. So just want to follow up on that. So they've got all that information, and we'll be monitoring that as we move forward.
So I think the, the state's going to be in the same situation as we are helping distribute to people in need, because there are going to be, just like we saw with the Health Department going from 120 to 30 to 25,000, there's just some of those projects out at the state level that will provide chunks of dollars that could be redistributed in different fashion. So I think it's, thank you very much for following up with the Association of Oregon Counties. They've been bringing a few staff on also, so it's kind of getting each person up to speed. So they're real sharp on the, the needs and the known requests by the counties.
Yeah, exactly. I think they are doing the exact same thing, which is, which makes sense to me. The, other, other than just the notes in red there, there are updates from last week. I just want to let you know that we'll be, we'll be actually processing our reimbursement request to the state here in the next couple of days. I was actually hoping to have a ballpark number to share with you today, but I don't have it quite yet this morning. But I'll definitely have that next week for you. So that'll bring us up to date. As the spreadsheet you're looking at has only our expenditures through August 7. So we're in the process of, of updating that and submitting another reimbursement request.
We haven't done that yet?
No.
Okay, so I noticed that we have the contract with Mosaic, and that was dated on October, or is that the contract?
$150,000 contract.
Right. Okay, so, and the other 50, is that what's going to Dr. Young then?
That was a question I had yesterday, and I don't believe I have an answer yet for that today. But that will be, I will follow up with that one as well. I haven't heard back yet from Health on that.
We do, we do have a contract, Commissioners. It's just a matter of whether it's properly noted on the CARES Act page yet or not.
The Dr. Young contract?
Yes.
Yes, we do have a contract with her for 50,000. I know Dave's reviewed it and everything. Okay, so, all right, so we should actually, we'll have to ask Mosaic to come in and report then on their testing. And, you know, if we go ahead and pay it, and it, and it really doesn't matter then if they use it all by 1231, Greg?
Oh, it does matter.
It does matter.
It does matter. And that's, and that's part of the reason why we're reviewing this weekly. We're staying on top of it, especially as we get closer and closer to the end of the year. We want to make sure that we're fully utilizing those funds, or coming back to give you the opportunity to reallocate those.
Okay, so, wow. Okay, it looks like the mortgage assistance program is chugging along. They've, they've already allocated almost 50,000, and then they've got another 71,000 impending. And we allocated 30,000 for that? So.
300.
Well, yes, yes. So we allocated 300,000. So they've got a ways to go there, too. So they, yeah, this is going to be, we're in October, so they know we're under this crunch, do they not?
Yeah, I have a weekly communication with all of the project managers here, and I ask for their updates and making, again, to make sure that we are staying on track for that 1230 deadline. And as we know that we're not going to be fully utilizing some of these funds, we can return them back to the pot, even if it's only $5,000, like you're seeing today.
Right.
We want to make sure we stay on top of that. Yeah. So I'll have more of an update on all of that next week.
Okay. Is there anything else here that you think we're still, I still see red on the childcare operating support?
Yes, that red is, that's just the new note as of today, yesterday, actually. And that's just an update from Neighbor Impact on their status.
And the state is meeting this afternoon on the metrics for schools. So hopefully, they're going to open up for schools sooner rather than 2021.
Greg, are there?
One other thing. Go ahead.
Other pending requests out there by anybody that have come to us recently?
The, if you turn to the very last page, the only pending request we've received so far, and this is no change from last week, is Ben Next is requesting more money for the resiliency grants. And there's a pending request for a co-ed coordinator, which is still in the works. But I just wanted to put it down on these notes, so we kept track of it.
How much is that for?
I don't know that at this point.
And what's co-ed?
Greg, what is?
Who is that?
Central Oregon.
Yeah.
I know.
Central Oregon, what?
It's not coming to me.
AD, what's an AD?
Um, I, I don't know if, I'm trying to think of it, too.
So my thought is, we may be very strategic. So big picture, when this was first starting during this, I guess it was last fiscal years when we spent some money, we got reimbursed as a county. You know, we had written checks for 50 and $100,000 a couple times. So it may be strategic to think of putting out a 50 or $100,000 grant over the allocation, knowing that either it's going to be resolved by other residuals or not, which is fine for the general fund's point of view. Because, I mean, you know, we made choices at this table six months ago, granting dollars, not knowing that how the CARES was going to come in. So I, I just think of that as a slush fund. So, you know, it's a commitment, it's a financial commitment, but I, I don't see any risk really in that, knowing that we had already risked it once, and we got reimbursed. So as I say, not risk at all. We had already expended it once, and we could expend it a second time.
What about the Neighbor Impact temporary facilities ordered eight weeks to install? How, how is that going to work? That was on?
What? Is that their facility, their building?
Right. It says, yeah, their warehouse expansion. They've paved it complete, temporary facility ordered. But what if it doesn't, it's got to be done in eight weeks. That was on this, I'm not, that was on the 20th. So that's putting it right at like December 20th. Is that going to really happen?
Well.
I will put that as a follow-up for next week.
I think making that commitment and ordering a large capital item like that's probably appropriate for expending funds. But yeah, I would.
Yeah, it, it, it does get us close to the end of December.
Yes, that one might be.
I, let me follow up with our friends at Neighbor Impact. I'll put that on my list for next week. Commissioner DeBonne, so I think what I heard you suggest was, do we want to, or should we consider allocating some funds that's perhaps beyond the uncommitted balance, with the assumption that we may have to balance that towards the end of, or as we get closer to 1230?
Yeah. So yeah, over allocate in a, in a, you know, judicious fashion, however we could determine that. And then knowing that, that'll be possibly good for the whole scenario.
Yeah. So I would suggest that we have that conversation next week because we will have a revised actual expenditures update by then.
Yep.
So we'll have a better idea of exactly how much of these commitments have been that the county has reimbursed our partners on versus what they're telling us they've spent. So we'll have a much, much clearer idea next week.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I wouldn't be comfortable doing anything today.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying for today.
Oh, good.
Okay, that's.
Did we ever figure out what COAD was?
Exactly.
Any of your geniuses there could tell us?
It stands for Community Organizations Active in Disaster.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I can't remember what the specific request was from, from them.
Actions and disaster?
Community Organizations Active in Disaster.
And we've met them before. So, but yeah, that'd be interesting to hear about the specific needs.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
No. I just wondered, what was, they could not find someone to fill the navigator position, because that was two months ago that we had set aside that money. And it is really important to improve our messaging to the Hispanic Latino population. And they just couldn't find someone, or they actually had someone in-house, and they realized that that was the right person to use.
I don't know the answer to that, but I can certainly add that to the list.
Because I kept asking Nahad, had they gotten the navigator off conversation. And so I just, you know, I'm really, it's really too bad that it took two months to get that person even hired in-house, because we really, we needed it in May. I mean, you know, we didn't have the funding in May, but we, we probably could have pulled fundings from somewhere for that. You know, it's, it's something the county needs to do a little better. So thank you, Greg, if you could follow up.
I will, I will follow up on that as well.
So, and you don't know how much the co-ed is asking for the coordinator then either? Because that, there's no dollars there.
I, I don't. It's, it was a pending request that there was conversation happening, and they weren't ready to submit it with any level of detail. This was a week or so ago. So, but I, I think next week we'll come back with, with more information on that, whether or not it's still a pending request, or it's not on the table anymore.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you so much for having these on a weekly basis.
You bet.
So appreciate it.
Yep, you bet. Have a good day.
No, thank you. Good luck with your dancing.
Dancing.
Okay, so can Whitney do the state of the county now?
I just got a note from her. She's printing the most recent version, and she'll be down any moment.
Okay, great. So is this, would this be a good moment to discuss what the E-Board's going to be doing on Friday?
It's up to you.
Okay, yes, because she's not here yet. So.
It is eligible as it's a potential real estate transaction, I believe, for executive session, if you'd.
Okay, if we maybe would prefer to do that. Okay, all right. Well, then we'll wait for exec. All right. Well, so Whitney, don't.
So I have other items.
Got any other items?
Yeah, yesterday was quite a busy day. Project Wildfire was a morning Zoom meeting. There's about, I think, maybe 41 people maximum at one point. So on the Project Wildfire meeting, there was an update from Peter Katuski about starting our outreach on the wildfire development requirement discussion, the R327 building code effort we were talking about. So that's going to be coming out. We're going to be publishing, you know, Community Development's going to be publishing a survey and a community discussion about that. And I think we're going to mention it at our State of the County also. So that was kind of the big meat of that conversation. The Fire Free Days for dropping off needles and biomass at Knott Landfill is, I think, this next weekend, doing offhand. But, and that's an effort by Deschutes Recycling. And that's a half-price sale, different than Fire Free, which is a funded Deschutes County effort. So this is just half-price sale by our, you know, yard waste recycling people in, at the Knott Landfill. So that was the big items for yesterday at Project Wildfire meeting. I want to thank, as I say, 41 people were there, so it was well-attended. Folks are, you know, really engaged on that. We had a user board meeting with 911 yesterday morning also. Nothing big jumped out, but there was, you know, the different agencies all in attendance, technical updates by the law enforcement and firepeople, the computer systems that are all going then at 911. So that was just a, a quick half-hour meeting and update, getting everybody together. And then Bend Metropolitan Plan, Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, meeting yesterday at lunch, at noon time. And that's city councilors and ODOT. We, it was basically a little bit of a financial and budget adjustments, supporting COIC and the Cascades Transit, and some software programming they're using for route optimization. So this is just some of the different topics for the meeting yesterday. Quite a, quite a busy morning, online all morning.
Okay. And I will update that I was on the Blue Mountain socioeconomic call in the morning. And then also, I was on the cattle grazing call. And it is fascinating that cattle grazing has been studied by the University of California, and definitely it does help with forest fires. It's part of prescribed burns, thinning, cattle grazing, something in order to keep our forests healthy, actually to get them healthy. So that, that was part of the discussion there. They're working on the Blue Mountain Plan with an enormous group of people, and the Forest Service is all involved. And they're trying to facilitate this because the last plan didn't, didn't survive. So this time, they're really trying to do it right. And it seems like, other than COVID slowing things down, it's working. And then at noon, I had the Sisters Economic Meeting, hearing some really great things happening in Sisters with the economy businesses. And thank goodness, Highway 22 to Salem is open now, because Sisters was rather impacted for a moment when the Sandy pass, the only option was Tombstone. So things are looking better in Sisters. So that was a good morning to have. So Whitney, you've joined us now? We need to review our presentation.
We're way ahead of schedule.
Yes, we're perfect. This is great, because Dr. Young can get on it at 11:00. So we've got 10 minutes.
I, as Tom mentioned, the copies are printing, but what I can do is share my screen, and you'll see on the TV. Will that work? Okay?
I'm sure it'll work just fine.
Okay, perfect. So this is an updated draft from the presentation that you saw earlier this week. Let's make sure that works.
Oh, perfect.
Amazing. So that's wireless from your laptop. So you're logged into the Zoom session and sharing. Wow, yeah, okay.
Good workaround.
Yeah.
An update for the board. I did touch base yesterday with a number of our local chambers, and it's great news. All of our Deschutes County Chambers of Commerce are going to be promoting Tuesday's event. That includes Sisters, Lapine, Redmond, Sun River, and Bend. So all of the chambers are going to promote the same Zoom session for their membership, and they're all excited to be working together and taking advantage of that opportunity. So.
The sad side is that when we usually do it in front of Redmond, we, you know, we bring out a lot of Redmond things.
That is true.
And so the unintended consequence is that we are going to be losing the personalization of the presentation.
I agree.
Yeah.
All of the chambers recognize that this is not a normal year, and this seems to be a great opportunity. So the chambers are taking questions in advance from members.
Oh, good.
Katie Brooks will be moderating. And so you'll see her kind of come on as a host and introduce you. She'll probably provide some introductory remarks, and then she will turn things over to the board to deliver the presentation. And then we'll try and, Katie will also run through Q and A at the end of the session.
And we'll do it from here, sitting like we do, slides like that. And I don't know if it'd be any live shots of us speaking or not with masks on, or?
I think we can probably switch back and forth and provide a nice mix of that.
Okay.
Seems like it would be a good.
Pull on production value now.
So, let's see. The slides did not change much. We have, we'll run through org chart. And originally, we were going to talk about kind of who, which commissioner was going to take which slides. I don't know if we want to do that still today, given that Commissioner Henderson had other commitments, or if you want to talk about that on Monday and just run through the presentation today?
We could probably, I'm thinking, we can select a few of them and leave some undecided, and see if it starts to hang together.
It'll save some time.
Okay. So this is kind of our growth section. I did add the box that was requested around the population dates. And this is, I think, will not. will not show in the clipped way that it's showing now, so you'll be able to see dates on the bottom. So I don't know if one commissioner would like to provide a lead-in to the growth section?
So, as I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, man, it'd be nice if we could maybe zoom in for people because people will be watching on different sizes of screens.
Okay.
So my thought is seeing this population growth chart is showing that trajectory and then the automation of that, if it's possible, is to zoom into that box and say, okay, and the words that I'm thinking would be, this is today and as we look at this increment, it, you know, it's getting to the 235 number. You know, so I don't know if we're ready for that, but you know, that would be like an automation from this slide, zooming right into that box.
Okay, we can work on that.
Yeah, just an idea.
So is that 2020 in red?
Yes.
And since I did that, if you step back a slide. The one with the org chart, sorry. Maybe walk across that more zoomed in too, just the other elected officials or, I don't know, just a kind of, you know, so Board of Commissioners is on top and then, you know, just kind of walking across the ones with photos and as I say, just an idea. I'm not sure how, how well that could work, but it could just kind of, you know, move a little bit as we're talking across it too.
Okay, that, I can, we can work on that.
We'll see, yep. Because I mean, you know, most screens, because we sit at different machines, that's just going to be a structure that you're going to see. You're not going to know any content on it.
Yep, okay. I will move. And then this slide, I pulled the bullets that were previously after into this slide as talking points.
Yeah.
But I think this is a nice one that gives you a lot to talk about right in one screen.
Talking points there would be, this is a 10-year period. What we've seen is growth. Right now is the 2020 numbers are being added to this and they're generally up. But the big question is what does it look like for the next few years, as in would these stay up there or come back down?
Well, I do find it fascinating. This kind of reminds me of my husband's financial statement, whereas 2006, didn't we have like 2,500 building permits back at that point in time? So the quantity was definitely higher then. We've never quite reached that quantity. I don't know, I mean, I don't know if you want to add that or not, but you know, when everyone says we are so busy, well, no, actually, we were really, 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 per numbers, really busy then.
Okay.
Well.
I mean, I just think it's a good perspective to bring back to the community that, you know, we might be, we were seriously growing now, but we were seriously growing then too.
And Tom could help with the scope of the number of people in that department and how we've grown back into it, but we're not where we were, like total lefty.
Yeah, no, I think Commissioner Adair is right. We certainly were busy. We had 75 employees approximately at the height of the building boom just before the recession in terms of building permits, land use applications, but I think we're, in terms of some of the others, code enforcement is certainly way more busy than it ever was back then is one of the indicators on there. Septic is booming also. So I think it's, certainly we were busy back then. A big difference though, in the type of development that was occurring back then in that much of it was spec building, you know, versus building now that everything's, as soon as it's built or even before it's done, gets purchased and people move in. So different, a little different flavor to it, but certainly in terms of the volume it was, we haven't quite reached there, but we're certainly heading in that direction.
We could make that note. I'm not writing down per slide. The spec, spec building opposed to owner-occupied is the big difference from more than 10 years ago.
I just, I just think it's, it is history and, okay, we, what, 75? What do we have, 48 now employees? What's our number out in CTG?
I'm not sure the exact number, but we're, we're not, certainly not to 75.
Right.
58. Nick just texted. I don't.
What is it?
58.
I don't.
Yep, there you go. Oh, he's watching, good, thank you Nick.
Thank you Nick. Thank you so much. All right.
Okay, moving forward.
So that was the height of the spec building?
Oh yeah, so remember that, one of the concepts when I saw this was to possibly put this before that other one and to fact, just a sense of place, as in, we're talking about the rural county, not in the cities, the incorporated cities. So that's what this hits, but that's a kind of a precursor statement to these next few comments, you know, this is outside of cities.
I will do that and I apologize, I was kind of flying because you are ahead of schedule this morning.
Yeah, no, not a problem.
We like flying.
Just happens to be like that.
Okay, I will get that.
But that would be the message, that we're, just a sense of what we're talking about.
Okay, and just with growth, is there, do we want to allocate any of the growth-related slides? I'll hop back a minute. To specific commissioners, I think there are four slides in that section, so we could rotate or I'm not sure if a commissioner wants to take a topic and then another commissioner might talk about infrastructure improvements. Do you have a sense of?
I think it's better to let somebody talk about what for and then go to the next, don't you think? A little more continuity.
Okay.
Otherwise we'll be like, this is yours, you know? We'll have to, yeah, I think it works out a little nicer.
Whenever there's introduction to the next section, it would be the next commissioner.
Yes.
Yeah, let's start with that.
Okay, I will do that and then bring it back to you Monday with kind of those groupings.
Okay.
And then we have our infrastructure improvements section, which this is a little laggy running through Zoom this way, but this is a cool, I think, time lapse that Chris Doty provided that gives it a little movement and hopefully we can get that, I think, when we're not dual live streaming, that'll play a little bit smoother. So Chris provided me some updated information.
So maybe just put two photos in instead of four, I think there was four there?
Yep.
Just because, as I say, different sized screens.
Yep, and that's actually a time-lapse video, but we can.
No, it looked, it looked, I thought it looked interesting.
Okay.
Well, but, yeah, I'm just thinking, however, people, different sized screens is all I'm thinking. We'll see, we'll think, yeah.
That's good to think about and we'll play with that. Chris sent me, and I haven't pulled it in, but a slide that has all the CIP projects on it. It's a map and it shows them all geographically, so we'll pull that in per your request. And then I just really slimmed down this section, so we have Rickard Road and then after this slide, we'll talk about the north end of Bend and Chris gave me some great information that we'll pull in here.
So then Rickard Road, we think of it as one of those paving and unpaved portion of the county system. And, you know, the example I know of is Huntington and Southern Deschutes County and this is just another one of those, you know, paving and unpaved portion, where we're in the enviable spot of being able to add pavement to our transportation system at this point in time. And it is on the schedule for next summer.
Well, the great news is I went down it when it wasn't paved, so I'm thinking that paving might be a really beneficial, at least it wasn't.
With your horse trailer or something.
No, it was with my, it was with someone else in their pickup.
Yep, yep.
But I'm like going, wow.
Oh, I know.
But it's great off of Highway 20. It definitely saves time getting south.
So that, and then this is kind of your investments. So this is wildfire mitigation, some of the work that Commissioner DeBon was talking about. And the highlighting the wildfire survey, which this is a placeholder, so if anyone's watching this, this draft, don't, this is not live, so don't text wildfire to take our online survey, but we'll get.
Okay, don't do that.
Fire free fall dates, so that stayed the same. The stabilization center.
So these are, yeah, that would be maybe switching from person to person right here.
And when we get into key investments. And I think that makes sense. Are there any topics specifically, do we want to save kind of talking about flow for Monday or do, are there specific topics like stabilization center that we might want to assign to specific commissioners today?
Well, I could, I could do stabilization.
Okay.
I'll do solid waste.
As I've heard the report, well, no, actually it didn't work the second time.
Okay, so we'll save wildfire mitigation as an open slot and Commissioner Adair will do stabilization and Commissioner DeBon will do solid waste.
And I'll be flexible to change it too, if we discuss it on Monday like that.
And I think Phil would like to talk about the Veterans Village.
There you go.
And then legislative priorities.
Okay, well, those look great.
Okay, do we want to leave that one unclaimed for today or?
Can I claim it?
Yeah, that's fine.
I did talk to Judge Ashby about the judges.
And then I slimmed down Measure 9-134 into this one slide, so I don't know if.
I had a call from a neighbor at 7:30 this morning asking me about that and we talked for about 20 minutes.
Okay, I can take that one if you want me to.
Okay.
Unless Commissioner Henderson wants to, I'm happy.
Maybe Commissioner Henderson or.
And then.
Just to give him something here to start with.
Yeah. Well, our COVID-19 slides, I flipped the order on these a little bit in an effort to, I just condensed this a little bit. So I talked a little bit about the county's role in protecting public health, also in supporting our economy.
So I'll start with that health one if we want to do parts and pieces of them.
And then supporting our economy.
Um, we can give that to Commissioner Henderson.
Okay. And CARES Investments is kind of a dovetail off that preceding slide.
So should that go with that, the one before?
Um, I definitely, it could stand alone or it could go with it, however the board would like.
Okay, well, either I, I'm happy to do it unless Commissioner Henderson wants to keep it together.
Okay, I will note that as a draft for Monday and then we'll have three slides of current data. I relayed your requests to Health Services and they said all of those things are doable things. What we're going to do is we're going to populate these slides on Friday. We'll get you a hard copy to look at over the weekend and then we'll update them again on Monday so that it's the freshest data that we can have for the presentation.
So that would beg the question of what's the difference between fresh data and that website that we're promoting that has the data on it?
The dashboarding.
Yep.
I think some of what the board requested in terms of county by county comparison isn't data that we display in our dashboard and so it's data that Jenny Faith will be just pulling together charts from.
Yep, and that's fine.
So I think we just want to make sure it's.
So I'd still like to see the dashboard first. This is accessible to you at all times and here's some more analysis as we look at the numbers.
That sounds great. So we'll pull this slide up first and we'll put the URL on it, which you had mentioned.
And I handed that off to somebody yesterday too. They were very interested to know that it was readily available.
And then this last slide is kind of calls to action, which the only minor change we made for Monday was to add getting your flu shot, which if the board's okay with that is definitely, I think, a helpful thing that people.
I'm happy to say that.
And next summer we're going to go from the summer dress to the jacket, hat and scarf.
Oh. Well, since that's me, I should say that, right?
Well, just saying, I could, that's a very summery photo and it's not going to feel like that next week.
Yeah, next week, uh, no.
Okay, well, we may have to alter that.
God, just seeing the.
You can put a coat over it.
Changes quick, yeah.
Okay, so that is helpful. If there's any other feedback or content that's not here that the board would like to see, is there anything missing, do you think? I think we're down to fewer than 30 slides, which is an improvement.
Better, better.
Well, I'd say if, if anybody, you know, any of the department heads are seeing it and think, man, I just, this one, one more topic or one more bullet point or whatever, I'm available for that because as soon as I look at it, I'll be thinking like that too. What, what aren't we saying?
Okay.
And it is the whole county, all, all chambers, hopefully a lot of residents, citizens, business owners following this, so, yeah.
Okay, that sounds great. Like I mentioned, we'll get you a hard copy by Friday morning, hopefully, to look at over the weekend and then come back on Monday just to finish that out.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whitney, thank you so much for being so.
Worked out great.
Wonderfully flexible. Today's been another day. Thanks. Okay, let's see. I just sent Dr. Young a text message to see. She is available to join us. Okay. Have you seen Dr. Young anywhere? No? Jeannie Young. Oh, fabulous. Okay, good, good, good. Hello.
Hi!
Hi, Dr. Young, thank you so much. Thanks for jumping up a little bit today. We've had one of the schedules.
Yeah, that's okay, I just finished swabbing somebody, so I am trying to collect my, my thoughts here. Yeah, so thanks for having me and you want the update on what's going on here?
Yes.
So basically for Deschutes County, I have tested in September 31 people, in October 32 people. I've had seven, so an 11% positivity rate.
11%?
The rest of the people that I'm testing, I'm getting a 6% positivity rate, so double in that Latinx population through volunteers in medicine mostly, but some other uninsured or underinsured people as well. So that's what's going on there. I think it's important to note that there are a lot of sick people out there that are getting tested, but they test negative and they're assuming that negative means that they don't have it, when it's really important for people to understand that really the confidence in these tests is about 70%. And what I can tell them is that I'm about 70% confident that you don't have COVID right now. So anyway, I think that, that people really don't understand the false negative situation. People want to go back to work, they use the negative test to assume that they can go back to work even if they're sick or exposed. Yeah, there are people using negative tests to, you know, go and do things that maybe they shouldn't really do. So that's discouraging to me honestly. What else can I tell you? Do you have any questions about that or the testing that I'm doing?
Well, that's really, that's really unfortunate because I would have hoped, other than really washing our hands really, really well, that's been recommended this entire time with masks and social distancing, when you're actually sick and even if you don't test positive for COVID, you shouldn't be exposing people to the germs that you're, you know, that you're displaying at that moment, so that's.
Exactly. People do not understand. I, I think they need a lot more education on that.
Is there, it would be possible if we had like a printout in Spanish for you to hand to people? We have.
Oh, that would be fantastic, yes.
I'm thinking.
Really good.
Yes, okay, so we'll ask our health department to do that. We just did hire our navigator, our Spanish navigator, and so I'm hoping, okay, good, we'll ask for that and it sounds like that, that could be helpful. All right.
So Dr. Young, I'd kind of like to talk to you that scenario a little bit. So somebody, most people you're seeing are symptomatic, flu-like, not feeling well, correct?
Not most people, some people. I'm trying, I'm trying to be able to see you guys. Somehow I'm not.
We can see you pretty well.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, so if somebody's listening and me, you know, me wanting to tell somebody what the best policy procedure practice is. So, so then are you seeing people that are, that are required to have tests or want to have tests?
Both. Some, most are exposed, so they should have a test.
Okay, an exposure, okay.
Yeah, or they're sick, they should have a test, or they need a negative test because they went somewhere and their employer won't let them come back to work until they have a negative test. But, so say somebody's traveling somewhere, there's a higher rate of COVID than here. They come back and they say, okay, I want a test, give me a test today, I got to go back to work tomorrow or the next day. Okay, well, you're, the 14-day window from exposure to when you are going to develop an infection, we're not getting them in that time period. It's, that's a false sense of security that that test is going to giving you a sense of confidence to go back to work and that you're not, you know, going to expose anybody. So we just, the way we're thinking about it is just not, people don't understand that they need to take precautions even if they test negative.
So, and those are the same precautions that anyone needs to take. So, and those are the same precautions that anyone needs to take at this point in time, washing hands, wearing a mask. So if I come back from a trip from somewhere.
Especially if you do more risky behaviors like traveling around.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Higher rate.
A heightened sense of, of responsibility. But, I mean, I'm just kind of deducing that there's really not much difference. You get a negative test, you go back to work, but, I mean, if you're interacting with anybody anywhere, we, we all, it's just the same kind of level of care for everybody at this point.
Scenario that I'm dealing with right now. I have people at a workplace who were exposed, the boss was positive, okay, last week. So they all were worried and all the workers came, I guess five of them, to get tested. I said, okay, it's been about five days, it's a good time to test you guys. We'll see, they all tested negative. Now it's been three days later and two of them are sick. The boss made them all go back to work, okay? Or suggested they all go back to work. And two of them were sick now and they're coming in, in a little while for, for their second test because we probably missed the window on the first test. But the boss is clearly positive.
Yep.
The county or whoever should have told him, shut that place down for at least two weeks. Everybody who worked there was exposed, need to go home, but not doing that. Somehow they're not taking it as seriously as they should. So these are just some frustrations that I have, um, that I'm seeing people, how they act in the community. People are, oh, I have the sniffles, I have a cold. Okay, I need a test because I'm going to go see my mom and she's vulnerable. Okay, well, A, if you're sick, don't go see somebody at all until three days after you have absolutely no symptoms. B, a negative test, when you have a cold or symptoms, isn't a pass to go visit a vulnerable person. They can't understand these concepts. So I need to do a better job of educating, but I think the whole community, we, as a, as a community, we need to do a better job trying to educate people about that, so.
So, Dr. Young, maybe you could do a PSA announcement for us? Um, just, uh, you know, some kind of announcement that we could have.
Oh, gosh, I'm not that good at public. No!
You're doing it now, this is a public meeting.
But you have the passion and you see what's really happening, okay.
I see what's happening and it's very concerning to me.
Okay.
It really is, and I know somebody could say it better than I can, but I'm just trying to tell you what, what's going on here from my view. On, can, I, I want to switch topics a little. I want to tell you about, um, the lab that I'm using is developing a PCR saliva test.
Okay.
So I've, all of my positives, I've been getting saliva from them and we're trying to validate this saliva test so we could get emergency use authorization for that. And it's much nicer for the, for the patient or the person to get that instead of a nose swab. Uh, the no, the nasal swabs also give me a lot more exposure to them, to sick people. If they just gave me a tube filled with saliva and they could just give it to me and I put it in a plastic bag and send it to the lab, that's a lot better way of collecting samples, so.
So who, who is developing that, the saliva test? Which drug company?
The, the lab that I use in California where I get my one-day turnaround for the PCR test, which is why everybody wants to use me because I have a one-day turnaround, which is better than most of the other labs around here. I don't know why they're so slow, um, even, you know, yeah, so, um, so that's very exciting, the PCR test. Another thing she's doing is we're going to have a respiratory pathogen flu, so influenza A, B and RSV, which is another virus that is a respiratory pathogen that affects people during the winter and COVID. So all four pathogens in one PCR, a multiplex. So that's going to be available also. Of course, it's going to cost more, but for really sick people who have really flu-like symptoms and are sick, those people need to know if it's flu or COVID or both or, or RSV or what. So that's exciting that she's going to have that too, uh, available.
That's your lab in California?
Yeah, not my lab, but the lab that I've been using and they're, they're fantastic. They've just been doing such a great job getting me resulted on time and, um, you know, not losing my samples. Quest lost a few of my samples, U-Dub, it was like through St. Charles, it took a week or, or so and at that point the test is obsolete. So this, this has been a, a very good relationship. The other thing I have to, to update you on is I am getting a, the, the BD Veritas antigen test, which is coming in the next two weeks, I'll get the analyzer, the tests are coming this week. I got a Clio waiver to be able to perform those tests. So I'll be able to test sick people within the first five days of their symptoms, um, just right here, right now, 15 minutes, I can tell you. So that's the antigen test.
Who's the waiver?
It's a Clio waiver, which means that I, I don't have to be a complex lab in order to do the test. So it's a point of care test. So it's what, it's the same test that BMC or Summit is doing. They're doing the Quidel one. I tried to get that one, but it's a long waiting time. Uh, this BD one was available. This one also has emergency use authorization by the FDA. I think Mosaic got some of the Binex Now, which is also an antigen test, also not quite as sensitive as, not as sensitive as the PCRs. Uh, maybe not even as good as the Veritas or the Quidel, but these are good tests because they're quick, right there, right then. You can tell somebody and if they can get a result immediately, then they will know, I have to immediately go home. You know, it's better than waiting. I, I can't tell you also how many people I test who are, who say to me, I got, I need a test because I've been exposed and the person I was with who is sick had a test, um, three days ago, but I was with them two days ago. And it's just, people aren't paying attention. Once you get a test, you isolate until that test comes back, the result. These young people are not doing that. They're hanging out with all their friends, going to get a test, still hanging out with their friends and then testing positive. And then that's a whole other slew of people that they've exposed, uh, since, since they even got the test. So that's another.
That's another part of our PSA message that we need to have because.
Yeah.
We've been talking about this for months too, that if you have, if you've been tested, then you need to go in isolation until, unless, you know, you get an immediate result. Yes.
So, and that's the beauty of the antigen test is that you can test the person and immediately say, okay, you're positive, go home. And if, if they test falsely, uh, negative on that, then you can always follow up with a PCR if they're sick, you know, if they're ill. So the, the antigen test is best used right now in this situation for the first, you know, people who are sick for the first five days of their symptoms. So the other thing is I'm, I am, um, I'm working out of my van, um, mostly doing testing out of, out of here. I'll show you my setup here. See, I've got a little lab set up here. And then I will overnight my samples by FedEx to the lab down in California and get that. But it's a little difficult now, it's really nice out, but as the weather gets bad, I may need a little bit of help in terms of a location. Right now, the parking lot that I'm in, I'm in like a little corner of it and I would really appreciate more of a drive-by experience for, for the people that I test so that they don't even ever get out of their car. And, um, they drive in and then they drive out. And I talked to volunteers in medicine and they're going to try to make that work where I can do that there in their parking lot. But I noticed that Deschutes County where the, uh, where they have the pharmacy over there, they have a tent where they do flu shots, that would be a perfect spot for me to go for a couple of hours every day and just test. And even people could just show up if they needed and if they knew that I was going to be there from a certain hour, uh, you know, period in the day, um, they could show up and we could do that for them. But, um, at this point, I'm working so hard, day and night. I'm up till 10 o'clock at night doing paperwork. I finally have a helper.
Oh, yes, didn't you want to hire an assistant?
I can't hire anybody because I am into this thing way more than I have made anything from it. So I am still down $20,000. I do have money coming from insurance companies, but I'm trying not to overbill because I feel like patients shouldn't have to pay more than $150 for a test, if they have to pay at all. And I know that in other places they're charging $550, $350 and I ju, I just don't believe that that is, I think that's terrible.
I, I had a COVID test and it was $321, the bill, the total bill.
Yeah, so.
My, my insurance picked up, uh, you know, a big portion of it and then there were, of course, there was the disallowed portion, but yes.
A lot of people's insurance don't pay for all of it or, or even half of it. Some of them don't, you know, and then some of them won't pay me because I am a chiropractic physician. They don't pay me at the same rate anyway. So I am way under, which is why I'm asking for help, because if I was actually making money, I would just hire somebody and, and rent a place to do it. But I just can't, you know, I have a daughter in medical school, I have a son who's applying to my, I, I mean, this is their tuition money that's going towards this because I believe it's so important. But I do need help, so if you can think of any way to, um, help me get volunteers.
Check on the rules regarding if you were working by the pharmacy. I know Tom's looking at me right now, so we'll have to check with our legal and see if that could be a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, just if you can help me. If, if you can't and I continue to just lose money, lose money and can't provide this service, then I, I'm not going to be able to do it for very much longer. I mean, it's, I am, I can't tell you how it's completely taken over my life, it's all I do.
Okay.
And I want to serve my community and I think it's really important right now. But if I don't have help, I, I don't think I can keep doing it, you know? I will try.
Okay, well, and the weather is supposed to change, like dramatically?
Yeah, and I, and I have heat in, in the van and everything, but, um, I just need a better, safer, uh, drive-through situation than I have right now. Make it safer for me and them and everybody else around.
Okay, so, um, Jeannie, do you have any feedback on our numbers? You know, our numbers were extremely low for about five, six weeks in Deschutes County and then they shot up, you know, September and then they were over the metrics, though this governor is, they're, they are meeting this afternoon regarding those metrics in order to perhaps, um, raise them a bit. I think they're pretty low. Do you have any feedback on that from your, the people you're dealing with?
Well, like I said, in the, um, in, in the Latinx population, I have 11% positivity and I have 6%, 5, 6% positivity for everyone else for the last few months. So I think that's about what we have seen in Oregon, but I have seen, it seems like higher positivity rates, um, just within the last few weeks. But, you know, I, I don't do enough testing for me to be statistically significant. So I think, you know, one thing I can say is that for whole families, where I'm getting the whole family a positive, except maybe one or two of the people test negative, later I go back on some of these families and I test the negative person for antibodies and they are positive. So what we're finding is that even though people test negative, 25 to 50% of the time, uh, uh, those tests are falsely negative because later I'm going back and finding they have antibodies, every single one in the family, even though half of them tested negative. Does that, is that clear?
Oh, yeah, definitely, we're.
But we are definitely, the caseloads that we're talking about are, are, that, uh, we're counting as, as cases in Deschutes County are maybe half as many as are actually there or, or even, you know, more out there. Does, am I making sense? I'm sorry.
Yes, no, of course, no, it's 40% asymptomatic is what the range, um, our health department had told us, I believe, like two weeks ago. So if 40% of the people actually have it and they're going to test positive for the antibodies, you know, I mean, 40% is huge.
Yeah, it's, it, it means we're finding a lot of people looking backward. That, that means we're just missing so many more people than we think we're, you know? And all those people are like, oh, I just had a cold and everything's fine and I'm just going to go do this because it's just a cold. You know, later, two weeks, three weeks later, if I find antibodies on them, that means they were infectious for that period of time for a week and they were, you know, possibly spreading to other people unknowingly because they had a negative test and they only had a cold, you know?
Okay, so let's say you just have a cold. Are you, you're saying then your cold clears up and then you still should wait three days before you go back to your regular life?
I would, and I think that that's the safest thing for everybody, but maybe I'm a little conservative on that because if we're getting 30% false negatives and people are symptomatic, you know, I, I think that's the safest way to, I, I do, honestly, I do. I think people shouldn't go back to work until a few days after they have no symptoms and they should definitely not go to work with any symptoms.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much.
No other questions, thank you very much.
No.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Dr. Young, we'll get back to you with.
Thank you so much for having me.
Literature and we'll find out about, uh, parking, uh, by the pharmacy. So we'll get back to you with those.
Very good, okay, you guys have a good day.
No, thank you, you too, be safe out there.
Yes, we'll try.
Okay. Okay, so, um, should we go into any other, other items? Should we go into executive session then?
Well, I checked with our folks on the executive session. I, I know Jeff Hines was hoping to be here for the Fairgrounds property discussion. He, he's not able to 11, until 11:45. We could just plunge in and, and go ahead and try and get it all done before noon, so you have the afternoon off. Or you could take a quick break or you could just postpone executive session until after lunch. It's entirely up to your preference.
Okay, so Jeff can get her at 11:45 then? So do you want to take a 15-minute break and then we'll come back?
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Flexible, I mean, do we have a couple items or is that the last?
We have a couple items.
Two, but I don't know that either one is super lengthy.
Right, they're not very long.
Yeah, so we'll just kind of work our way through it.
Okay, all right, so we will adjourn until 11:45. Oh, sorry, recess. We're only going to go to recess now, we're going to go outside and play.
There you go.
Before it starts moving. Yeah. All right, thank you so much. We are resuming our morning meeting for, excuse me, we're resuming our morning meeting for October 21st, 2020 and now we're actually going to leave for executive session, so thank you very much. Zoom, our regularly scheduled meeting. And thank you so very much, thank you for joining us today. Um, our next meeting will be next Monday. I hope you can join us then. Please say, stay safe and get your flu shot if you haven't already done so. Oh, yes, and of course, vote. We've already, we're probably at 15% today because we've seen 12 boxes come in, so it's huge. Thank you, please vote.